Okay, I would like to call to order the meeting of the South Kingston Library Board of Trustees. Our first order, uh, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. So has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? And are there any questions or suggested changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
So a motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Call in favor?
I'd.
opposed? Okay, that passes. Correspondence?
No. No, we do not.
I do not either. Public comment? I see the numbers of the public here. So moving on to President's report. A couple of things to report. Speaking kind of related to public comments. Yeah, this is Donna, had surgery, hip surgery. And I happened to see her over the weekend at the concert. Midnight was the same one that you were at.
The evening or the Sunday? She goes to Sunday.
Sunday.
Okay.
Uh, and she's doing well. She was, you know, she had a pain and she's walking slow, but she seems to be, you know, she's back up on her feet. And so it was good news.
So.
Good news. Also, I got in touch with Jen Ferry, who's the director of the South County Art Association, for an update on the John Russell house.
Is it John, Jen?
Jen.
Jen, okay.
Jen Ferry. Um, and it's still pending. They hired a title lawyer to research the title. It's the most complicated title he's ever seen. And it goes back a long way to the eighteen hundreds. The art association has applied for a grant to help pay for renovations different when they do get the building. So it's still up in the air, but it seems to be incrementally inch by inch moving in that direction.
So she's still seemed pretty positive that that was.
I think so, but she's, you know, she's a realist. And has known, you know, this has been going on for a long, long time. So we'll see what happens, but hopefully it will all work out. Uh, and this is all I have to report. Uh, so Laurel, Director's report?
Uh, your typical report. And the handouts I gave you. Um, I'll defer to, you get to the community learning center update. That's all the stuff that we did over the month is listed there. We have our meetings. Let's see if anything else gets out. Everything is pretty status quo. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, what's up with the funding for OSL? Any progress on that or any?
So I think you mean OLS, the state funding.
OLS, sorry, it's OLS, right.
Um, they're good right now.
Yeah.
Because of the way the fiscal years work, they are, are good for this upcoming year.
Right.
But, um, I have not heard anything on the front of, of concern beyond that. So, um, we'll start to find out when the summer reading program rolls around. We'll, we'll get a, probably a better idea of where their concerns might be for funding grants and stuff like that. But as far as I know, they're doing, they're doing well, well enough for this, this fiscal year.
Well enough is great.
Yeah.
Yes.
And state aid, you know, doesn't even come out of that budget. So we're not, we're not worried about that.
Um, Laurel, could you elaborate a little bit on these statistics? What checkouts, which are horrible.
So absolutely. So you had asked me to provide you with a kind of a look at what the circulation was for each location. And that's what, what's there. And I went apples to apples, so I showed you January through April. So we could get an idea of those months when we're gonna be closed. Um, you know, what, what is the actual traffic that we see at each location? So, um, January twenty twenty five, Peacedale saw ten thousand eighty checkouts amongst one thousand three hundred and ninety seven barrowers.
Barrowers?
Thank you.
Patrons. So ten thousand, like everything, books, DVDs, magazines, whatever.
Yeah.
And thirteen ninety seven is, right, barrowers.
The number of people.
Like library cards scanned. Because I could be here with.
Correct, like unique users.
Right.
We look at it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's Peacedale. Then down to Kingston is, uh, three thousand two hundred and eighty nine checkouts with, yes, with four hundred and twenty six barrowers. Barrowers. People who took it out and then down to Hale, uh, nine hundred and seventeen checkouts with one hundred and thirty eight patrons.
Is there a way to, um, flesh out from these, the number of people who have borrowed books into your library looking and coming to the library to pick up books from something else?
I, I could do that. So you, you wanna know what's coming in from other libraries in, in OSLs?
More, um, well, yes.
That must count as a checkout though.
Not just a checkout, but how is there one? People are actually coming to pick up books from major libraries.
Yes, I could, I could find that out. I think too, this figure, you guys should also have the circulation snapshot for, for the most recent month. And if you look at the ILL down on the bottom.
Oh, I see.
So what, and that's for, from October twenty twenty four to October twenty twenty five, fifty thousand were, a little over fifty thousand were from other libraries.
Oh, okay.
So I could certainly drill down and find out what, like per month. I would say, yeah, I don't wanna guess. So, um, but I could find that out.
Okay, well, there's a, I can explain to you. Reason I'm interested in this is just, I'm curious about the impact on people talking more about this, of the closure. And, um, especially people who may not have cars, uh, who may live around here and walk to the library. So we will talk about that more when, uh, when that comes up. Just thank you for getting these, uh, figures for us. I have nothing else to report, so. Laurel, Director's report?
Uh, so again, the, all the meetings that's, and trainings that staff has attended, um, nothing un, out of the ordinary. But good stuff, still the state scene. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And we just went over the statistics. If you guys had any questions about that.
Just an anecdote, do you have any sense of attendance at these, um, sessions like the fraud against older adults or social media?
I don't, because they all vary. Most of them, almost all of them are virtual. So this, the attendance could be quite high because, you know, it's easier for people to attend. Some of them may even be in, I don't always indicate if it's live or, um, some of them may be recording. So it's something that was shown live and then staff can go back and watch later. So, um, it's, it's hard to, to judge.
Any other questions?
What, um, what went on at the October twenty seven Friends of the Peacedale Library meeting?
So that was the annual meeting that the board of friends, uh, executive board of the Friends of the Library have. We discussed, um, them supporting the furniture for the CLC, which was, um, that would support. Um, we discuss the annual letter, which they send out. Um, we didn't send one out last year, but, um, it actually probably just went out today. So if you donated in the past, you will be getting a letter soon that asks you for, for your continued support. And we just talked about, um, some general future ideas for programming. Again, it's hard with all the, uh, things going on here to plan anything. So we're, we're just, but we're, we're looking towards the future. But right now, I think that the big focus is their continued support, um, for programming, because they pay for a great deal of our programming and for a whole bunch of furniture when the CLC is done.
Okay, thank you. And what groups is that?
The Friends of the Peacedale Library. So each branch has their own Friends.
We never got together. The pandemic got in our way. We were gonna, remember? And then we sort of kept delaying it. Then the pandemic came and we said, okay, forget it.
We were going to what?
Meet with the president or their boards and, but together have a group meeting. That was quite a while ago.
I, I think we'll revisit that. One of the reasons that we didn't, um, follow through with that too was because we knew that we might be asking specifically for money for the Peacedale Library. And if all that money was all the money, the money that they've raised and saved, it was easier to keep it separate at that time. But it's something that I'd like to look at again in the future.
Yeah, 'cause now, because see Laurel, I don't think they should be separate. We shouldn't think of ourselves that way.
I, I, I agree.
I think I told you, I did the books for the Friends of the, um, nat, the Wildlife Refugees. And that's the Kettle Pond down the road here on Route One. But then there's Satch West Point and all those. And they didn't each have their own, they have five. They didn't each have their own. They had one Friends group and people joined. It was an issue about, they would swap, sometimes meet in Satch West, which is over on Equidemic Island, or meet here, or have events. But somehow they worked it out.
Yeah.
And they raised a fair amount of money. You're right.
It's definitely the goal. Uh, keep in mind, like, they were separate because the libraries were separate. Everybody had their own board.
Right.
They had their own budgets. They had their own, you know, it had nothing to do with the town. They, they did their own, um, governance, you know, so.
But it's been a while.
Oh, since the seventies, yeah, so now.
I mean, can you imagine if there were two other directors of those libraries, those branches?
No, I could not.
Anyways, I hear you and I totally get it.
Yeah, the time will come.
Right.
It's, it's taking.
And I'm glad they have money to be able to contribute to the CLC. I think that's wonderful.
Yes, we're very fortunate.
They've done some great fundraisers.
Do you donate to any of the Friends groups? Do you have to become a member or do you have to take a, take a step?
Each one's set up a little differently, but yes, yes. Not necessarily a voting member, but a member.
Yeah, I, I give them money.
Considering a part of the library, some.
Yeah, they save you a letter with a little envelope.
Yeah.
And they want you to join.
They used to have at Kingston, I don't know if they have it anymore, like a lifetime, like a, they put a price on, do you wanna be a good friend or a lifetime friend or that kind of thing? So, um, every, everything's a little, I think any donation is one of those.
Okay, so we talked about statistics. Um, that brings us to item, excuse me, seven.
Yes.
Community Learning Center Grant Update.
Yes, so things are going great. Um, we had that closure for a very small abatement and everything came out well. The resulting ear tests that they have to do pass, so yay. Um, we, as you all know, hopefully the project schedule is going to, um, we're going to need to close the Peacedale Library for two to three months, starting January fifth. So, uh, it can't be avoided. It's a safety thing. It's, it's a closure to the public. We are still gonna have a few staff here working, but the majority of the staff is going to be, um, moved out to the other branches. And we are going to be extending the hours at the other branches in order to accommodate this. Um, I have been, we have been sending out emails and all that, but I'm gonna ask you guys to take some of these. It has our extended hours. Hand them out to your friends and family, um, or anybody that you know that uses the library.
I got the email already.
Um, if you wanna, um, did you sometimes take stuff to?
The rec center.
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna write that as well?
Take a pile to the rec center?
Yes, that would be wonderful. We got more and we'll, you know, we're putting them in the books as they go out.
Oh, good.
We're, um, you know, blasting on Facebook, email blast, all that stuff. So, um, feel free to share. That one has like the directions to the, um.
Oh, this one's different, okay.
Yep. We have a few different ones. We're highlighting programs that are going on at Kingston and Hale. But just for, um, the record, the new hours at Kingston, um, will be Monday ten to eight, Tuesday ten to eight, Wednesday ten to eight, Thursday ten to eight, Friday nine to five, Saturday nine to five. And the new hours at Hale will be Monday nine to five, Tuesday nine to eight, Wednesday nine to five, Thursday nine to five, Friday nine to five, and Saturday nine to five.
Yeah, Laurel, I like this one that you don't open up. Do you have more of these?
We have more of everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll come back and get more.
Come back.
Yeah.
And we have, I have some flyers too.
Because these, people are gonna like go, oh, I don't care about the Kingston Free Library.
Right.
I like this one. This is very clear, yes.
And you wanna take some flyers too?
Oh, okay, I'll put these all at the rec center.
Thank you, guys.
This is really, this is a nice one.
This is the work of our new, uh, staff member, Izzy Bona. Big shout out. She does a great job.
Yeah, very nice.
And if you guys get any feedback or hear anything, like if you hear talk around the town like, well, why, you know, didn't they tell us about this particular part? Let me know, we'll do our best. We can't think of everything, um, but we're here to answer any questions. So I think if anybody asks you anything, just tell them to give us a call. We're happy to.
Okay, but wait a minute. This one does not say that Peacedale's closed for renovation.
No, it doesn't. But some of them were just designed to do the hours.
Okay, all right.
So like we would have these out at the branches kind of thing?
Yeah, maybe the, yeah.
Okay. But I.
I'll come by and get more of these.
Okay, I think we should.
I think I should, oh.
Yeah, because we wanna, I mean, highlight that this is a good thing.
Well, but to me, this almost means like the Peacedale, it's gone.
Oh, well, I don't know, what do you guys think? Oh, I'm sorry.
See, because whereas this one says Peacedale Library closed for renovation, that to me is very clear.
Right.
And then you tell Kingston and Hale. I don't know, I'm just thinking, I, I.
I think these were, we were meaning these to be pushed out at the branches. So not necessarily pushing out that Peacedale would be temporarily closed, but more pushing out that the branches would be open.
More.
So more for like just making it off the branch.
You know, we'll put them out, they'll call you.
It's not necessarily about.
People will call or.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things that somebody may ask, the book drop will be closed, um, starting January fifth. Um, we're asking people to change their pickup locations if they're used to getting books on hold, or to suspend their holds, um, is another option. They will be unable to after the first of December, they will, people will not be able to choose Peacedale as a location. So we're doing our best within the parameters of the software that we use to try to make it as painless as possible.
But what about, like I have mine defaulted. And I mean, I'm gonna go in and change it so that it'll all change. But say someone doesn't do that. They leave at Peacedale and they have, you know, a few books on hold.
Right.
Where will they go?
Right, so by the time that that date rolls around, I think we would have a, maybe just a few tricklers, let's call them, and we'll just deal with them.
You'll deal with them, okay.
We'll call them, we'll, I don't know. Well, I don't, hopefully it will slowly, slowly drip, you know, drip down and it will be much easier to manage once we get to the actual date.
Excuse me, I don't know how many of you seen, have seen the email that went out explaining all of this.
Yeah, I just got it.
I thought it was very well, very well done.
This morning, I think. Yeah, it's great.
Clear and explained it well. Um, and put it in the context, plus having the art, the artist rendering. You know, caught your eye and gave a, gave a good indication of what you're looking forward to.
So I wanna give Karen Lake big credit for that.
Very well done.
The CLC coordinator, she, uh, does a lot of the bulk of that stuff and then I get to say it to me.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Concerns, I guess. Here at Peacedale, the, every time I come in in the afternoon, there's people using the internet. Studying, there's people working. Is there any place in Kingston or Hale where they can take advantage of the internet? They're probably mostly at Kingston.
There are, there is one, right now one internet station. We're gonna put another one in, like had that excellent suggestion a few weeks ago. So there'll be two. There is Wi-Fi. So nowadays you see a lot of people just have their own devices, which is good. Um, Hale has one. Um, and again, there's Wi-Fi. Um, I could say the senior center has a computer lab. What they don't have is printing, so, but people can certainly go there and check their email if they're seniors, sorry. I'm sure you're senior to go there, but, um.
At Kingston, so there is Wi-Fi, but, um, there is that room behind the circulation desk that's sometimes, it's a.
Yes, the table, yeah.
Table. Would that be available to patrons to use and, you know, if they're, if they, uh, needed a desktop space?
It's available now.
It is?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
Just trying to.
I don't think many people, we sit back and go.
No, but maybe if, you know, people who came here regularly to take advantage of the internet.
Absolutely.
Access.
Yep.
Might wanna go to Kingston. Just should, make sure that they go, that's available, if there's a way to signal that at the library.
Yep.
We talked to, I think, another time about trying to make it, um, clear to people who are going to Kingston for the first time perhaps, that there's parking at the church spot. So are we able to find a message back or?
Um, we have not put that out in the message yet. And Marion did reach out and, you know, they're, they're fine with the, with that. I think, um, maybe the next newsletter, we could, we could push that out. A lot of it might just have to be word of, word of mouth. Where, you know, somebody calls and complains or goes into Kingston, oh my God, I had a hard time parking. We could tell them then. I gotta be honest, like I don't like the church parking. I think that's more dangerous than.
Well, nobody likes it, but, but.
Yeah, like walking down that hill, that is scary.
No, nobody likes it. But sometimes that's the only alternative.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Often during, uh, you know, student hours, it's the only alternative.
Yeah, I agree. But, uh, that's another good thing. The first three weeks, there will be no schools, so there will be a lot of street parking.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Yeah, that's good.
That's almost half the time that we, we'll be doing this. So, um, so that is a good thing.
What about, I know it's winter time, but at least, is it available that there would still be, oh, could people come and, even come in this parking lot or is, um, you know, and use the Wi-Fi? Or will the construction workers want a lot of the space?
Well, we're not gonna block the parking lot.
Oh, okay, good.
Um.
I mean, I know it's winter, but.
Like I said, we're still gonna have a few staff here.
Okay.
Um, as long as we can and, um, yeah.
Because people do use that.
I know, I've seen them every morning when I get in.
When my electricity was, yeah. Yeah?
Yeah.
I've used it when I, my power went out. And my Wi-Fi. Um, yeah, Tim, you're bringing up excellent points. There are always people on the computer, CEO. I mean, I come in and out at different hours for picking up books. I, I totally refuse to have a printer anymore, so I use the printer here because I had so many problems with them. They're always, I mean, tonight they're up there. Those people are gonna be very sad campers. And I don't know what to say.
Neither do I.
And they don't have a laptop.
It's temporary, that, that's what I said, it's temporary.
Right, I, right Laurel, it is.
It is temporary.
They don't have a laptop even, or maybe their phone isn't good enough they, for what they wanna do on it, whether it's play games or do, you know, looking for a job, whatever. Yeah, that is, you're right, it's temporary. You have to keep remembering that.
Yep.
I don't know, does the bowling alley have Wi-Fi? They don't let people hang out there probably.
No, but, uh, there are other places around it have Wi-Fi.
Yeah, but you have to.
Panera Bread.
Panera, but they wouldn't want you just to come in and.
No, but, you know, if you buy a cup of coffee.
Yeah, a cup of coffee.
Does it kill? I don't know if they kill, but.
Um, the guild, I'm sure has Wi-Fi, but.
I don't know if they have Wi-Fi.
No.
I don't know.
Oh, the rec center has Wi-Fi.
Oh, then.
I mean, but you come in there and you're, you're supposed to be coming to a program, right?
Right, they don't have like a, like a sitting here.
You're playing pickleball and you've got a, a scan card. They're now on a scan system. They've joined the twenty first century. So, yeah, they wouldn't want. And I'm sure the senior center doesn't want, no, non-members or teenagers.
Yeah, right, right.
No, just for seniors, that's what it's for, yeah.
Right, right.
But maybe the guild, if there's a room there, it could, you know, where the tables and chairs, if they do have Wi-Fi, it would be an alternative for people.
I'll, I'll talk to Karen Terry and see if there's any charities for that type of thing.
Yeah.
I don't wanna go crazy for two months.
I understand what you're saying.
And, you know, like I, I just.
I just think some people really need that access.
I do.
When I come in during the day, there's always people.
Yeah.
Look like they may not have it at home.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But we, we have two locations that can accommodate, or Narragansett, I'm, you know, there's other libraries that could use.
That's true.
We're not the only libraries.
But then Tim brought up the point, are people walking here? Maybe, I don't know.
I do know that that could be the case for, for a few.
Yeah.
I just don't know what to do.
Or they get dropped off by some, no, I understand Laurel. And you say two months, it could be three.
It could be three.
Construction is always a problem. Meaning to sort of anticipate that it could be three.
Yeah.
But you're right, you have to just keep.
Right, it could be one. And you know, hey, it could be one, so.
You're right, but I would never say that to anyone.
No, I, I know, but I'm just saying, you, we look on the bad side.
Right.
You gotta look on a, another side as well, so.
I mean, hopefully we'll have, I mean, I don't want a mild winter, but, well, it can snow up north, that would be good. Um, but a mild winter would also help because then deliveries can get made and all sorts of stuff they need. But.
Yeah, I think it, it's just a little piece of it's gonna be unavoidable.
Yeah.
We have to close. Would we want those people that use a computer, a big steel girder to fall on them? No.
Oh, no.
No, I agree with that.
No, no, no. Oh, I think it absolutely has to be closed.
Yeah. But the, exploring the guild option.
I will, I will.
It may be hard, it would be hard for them to police it too if they had a room.
Right, and the equipment and, yeah, that's, that's a burden too.
But maybe not.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna add to somebody else's work room here, so.
Yeah, but it's worth a conversation.
But it's, it's a conversation, absolutely, absolutely.
Could we staff it if we had to? Could one staffer be there? I mean, if it was limited, you know.
And maybe not on a da, daily basis, but maybe, you know, it's like the compromise here is saying, okay, every Wednesday is gonna be library at the guild or maybe town hall is a better choice.
Or as we, we talked about a little bit about. Or as we, we talked about a little bit about, I mean, you know, once a week, if, if people don't have cars and they wanna pick up books that they got into. Into library. On, I mean, you know, instead of, you know, people that can't, don't have cars, they get robbed in a guild, that's a possibility.
Yeah, um, I'd have to, you know, like these one exstep, exceptions may be okay, but once you get the slippery soap,
No.
well, you do something for one person, now you're gonna, why can't you do it for me, you did it for someone, so.
Yeah. No, I, I didn't mean on an individual basis, but maybe one morning a week, an afternoon, I think, um, something like that.
Yeah. Right.
And you have to have an exit strategy, otherwise people just say, why are you doing this all the time?
Right, yeah, like I, I think for the amount, if, if this was on these six months, I would think that this is, that would be warranted.
I don't wanna walk through a high street.
But I think once you start with, well, we're gonna do it, this, like, first of all, logistically, they still have to be sent somewhere. Um, or like the, the locate, like, we still have to do the location changes and all that, um. So logistically, that, that's not gonna change much, people would still, like, we can't have Peace Dale be on the location pickup.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, let's say, everybody says we're gonna go to Kingston, and all their holds are gonna be going to Kingston. How do you pick and choose who, like, you, do we really wanna be lugging stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's either, I think what you're saying, Robert, it's like kind of an all or, or none kinda thing, you can't just do it a little bit for, for somebody that may or may not have a car.
No, but we just, yeah, you don't, and you don't wanna create a service that people expect when we're ready to open up again, but, you know.
Right, right, yeah, I think we'll, we'll muddle through if, uh, if we get two weeks into it and there's pitchforks outside, I'll reevaluate and we can have another discussion. Um, but I, I think unfortunately that there, there will be a few people that will be hit a little harder by our closure than others.
Mm-hmm.
And I apologize, but I, I don't see a way around it right now.
I mean, you've given a lot of notice with your signage and you can't make someone go stand in front of it and say, read this, know this,
Yes.
Those are goals.
We're working on it, but you may be impacted by this, it's.
Yeah, I think that messaging has been really well done.
Well, we have a good team and, um, and let's hope that, that it gets to people's ears and any advocacy you could do on, on your end in the public is helpful, so.
Mm-hmm, I haven't heard any pushback, um, from anyone, I expected when it first appeared on Facebook, for example. There's always somebody that's got a post on Facebook.
Yes, well, right, that's why I don't do it.
I expected that, and I, I didn't see that, maybe I missed it, but, um, I think because you've been so forthcoming about what's, what's happening, why we're doing it, and what's, what to expect, um, that has negated that kinda negative response.
You know, what's the, you, I don't know, I don't have a calendar, I could find one on the computer, I don't feel like it. So, you said the fifth, so is that a Monday? When is January first?
Thursday.
I don't know what day of the week, this and New Years are.
Thursday. Thursday.
Thursday, so.
Yeah, it's a Monday, yep.
So Thursday is January first, then you guys are open Friday and Saturday, the second and third? Because then the fourth is Sunday, you close, and the fifth is the day it's starting, so there will be two days in January, you're open.
Yep.
I mean, those could be kinda chaotic days here, you might, although school is closed, people are.
We're, and, and I think those statistics that, um, Tim asked for show that we are much less busy in the, much less busy.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's not like it's New Years and now this happens, so you got two days to just sorta.
Yes.
Get the books back, people are gonna bring them in, maybe.
Which is fine.
Can they still, when are you stopping that books are gonna be delivered here?
That will stop.
From another library.
That will stop on the fifteenth.
Of December? Okay, I better change mine right away, I have a lot of books coming.
I'll be curious, I'll be curious to see, uh, if Hale Library sees him up.
Yes. I hope so.
I hope so too, I mean, because so many people in this town don't even realize it's there, I'm, I'm curious about that.
Well, I made a suggestion and Laurel's gonna talk to Robin about it, you know, is the super program lady here. I think they should have afternoon bingo once a week, no money, try to get some seniors to go to the Hale Library, make it fun.
Well, I do have the knitting group.
Oh, I know, but bingo is more fun than knitting.
Yes. Well, it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be at Hale, Robin is gonna be working at Kingston, so her and Louis are teaming up.
Oh, she's only.
Some really good program.
Oh, so she's only doing programming for Kingston?
Well, she's, yes.
She doesn't do Hale?
No.
Oh, well, whoever does Hale.
Have much adult programming here, but maybe we could get back to.
I know, okay, do it at Kingston, try it out, that would be the trial.
Bingo.
Okay, um, are there any other comments or questions about the Community Learning Center grant update? Now we'll move to item eight, our next meeting will be December ninth, twenty twenty five, which is my wife's birthday.
So, it's your birthday?
My wife's.
Oh, your wife's birthday, oh dear, are we gonna meet? Didn't last year we, I think we kept talking about not meeting, I know he'll, or Lindsay doesn't like to.
We did talk about skipping into center, but.
I think that everyone has planned, we should meet.
What's going on, yeah, I'll be around.
Okay, um, so, just to, last item, number nine, adjournment, uh, does anyone wanna make an motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Hey, Joel.
Let Laurel go home to sleep.